Good evening, everyone. It looks like we have a full council here. We'll give another minute as people are logging in, but it's nice to see a full council tonight. And yeah, let's just give it one more minute for folks to dial up. All right, we have a full council, so we will get started. I'll call the meeting to order for our regular Tuesday, March 8th meeting. Welcome, Jack Tuttle, for your first council meeting, so it's nice to see you join the crew. And at this point, we will stand for Pledge of Allegiance. All right, and as an ongoing business, we have the ongoing resolution 2021-12 authorizing continued continued use of virtual meetings. So this is perhaps we'll see what tonight's discussion leads to, but perhaps this is one of our last virtual meetings, entirely virtual. But at this point, we do not have or did not have a closed session, so nothing to report there. So we will start with our agenda. We have our agenda on the webpage as always. Do we have any discussion regarding the agenda tonight? Any substantive changes, any discussion regarding the agenda from the council? All right, seeing none, any public comment on the agenda tonight? All right, again, seeing none. Looking for a motion regarding tonight's agenda.
Make a motion that we accept tonight's agenda.
I'll second it.
First, from Councilman Grover, second from Councilman West. Ah, I do see a hand up. Yes, Paula.
Okay. This is for comments on items appearing on the agenda.
This is whether or not we're going to change the agenda.
Change the agenda. No, no comments on changing the agenda.
Okay.
I thought public comment after the Pledge of Allegiance are comments on appearing on the agenda according according to the paper that's posted in city documents.
Right, right. Tonight, what we're doing, or right now, rather, we're voting on whether or not we want to approve the agenda as it stands tonight before we go through it.
Oh, okay. I'm in the wrong place then.
All right, we'll we'll come back to you when when there are comments.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so Gabe, if you don't mind, please do a roll call vote for all items.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
So we've got a motion, Councilmember Grover, seconded by West, to approve the agenda as submitted, starting with Councilmember Grover.
Aye.
West?
Yes.
Kelly?
Aye.
Tuttle?
Aye.
And Ladwig?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Moving on then to, we have the minutes from February 22nd, the February 20, sorry, the February 8th minutes will be provided in a future packet. So we have for us tonight, they were added to the packet a little this afternoon, so hopefully folks have had a chance to review the minutes from February 22nd. Any substantive changes in the minutes from February 22nd meeting from the council? Seeing none, any public comment regarding the minutes from, and they're on the they're on the webpage, the city's webpage, any public comment regarding the February 22nd minutes? Also seeing none. Bringing it back to the council, do we have an approval for the minutes from February 22nd?
I'll move that we accept the minutes.
And I'll second.
First by West, second by Kelly. Mr. Adams.
Yeah, so first by Councilmember West, second by Kelly, just as you said, Mr. Ladwig, and we have I guess Councilmember Tuttle will abstain because he was not voting on this particular set of minutes, so we'll finish it off with looks like Councilmember Grover.
Aye.
Okay, and then West?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes, I.
And Mayor Ladwig?
Yes.
Minutes of this February 22nd meeting passed four to zero.
Thank you very much. At this point, we will move into council reports and or committee assignments. Ms. Kelly, do you have any reports from any committee assignments that you'd like to share or council?
I do not this evening.
Okay. Mr. Tunnel, did I see your hand about to go up or was, no, okay. Mr. West?
I've got a brief report from HCOG. It just looks like the corridor project is now going to be complete, they think, in 2025. They've moved along, got past some of the problems they've had, so hopefully you'll see that corridor project, not too many years away. In terms of meetings, it looks like that the way they're going to have meetings from this point on is that their real deal is going to start doing hybrids. So as Eureka, they put a lot of money into their hybrid meetings. HGA is going to, I understand, is going to be in person and hybrid, and Arcade is going to go hybrid, so just so you'll get an idea of what has this will pertain to a later later point. And the Transportation Development Act is has given out quite a bit of money to everybody, and Trinidad gets, of course, the lowest amount, about fifteen, just under $15,000, but still it'll be for bicycle and bed project, so that's out there, and and also we'll have, next month, Beth Burks will be coming to the meeting, our April meeting, in order to give us a little summary of what's going on with HCOG and how it pertains to Trinidad. So hopefully that'll be a nice talk for us next next meeting. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. West. Mr. Grover, anything to report?
I have a couple items here to bring up. First of all, I want to thank the Humble County Board of Supervisors for this certificate of acknowledgement they sent for my roommate Erin for the worksheet in Humboldt with human rights and other things, so wanted to say that while I'm here in a public venue. I got to attend the Redwood Coast Energy Authority Monthly Board of Directors Meeting. That's really taken off. I mean, we are going to be leading the world in energy production and distribution, and when we look into community choice energy and the way we're tying into the whole state and the way it's just gonna, it's kind of a give and take. I'm just learning so much more about the balance it takes when you're talking about renewable energies and not firing up a plant that's running all the time. You know, we have different times, there's wind, different times, there's ocean, different coordination. So I recommend when I leave here in the next couple of months, that somebody take my place there because we really want to be involved in that. And they do have a lot of programs that would help individuals upgrading their homes to solar, which is, you know, the way for the future here. And that's kind of my segue into here. It looks like around May will probably be my last meeting here. I'll still be doing stuff with the Green Party, so you might see me here and there for regional projects and stuff like that. But yeah, besides that, I think that's it for me. Thanks.
Go ahead, Jack.
I wanted to, I forgot to mention our Trails Committee, so Cheryl, I may need a little help on this if I don't get it all, but we did meet. And we're starting to work towards at least a variety of the of looking at trails and trying to figure out essentially what's out there and what we will need for the trails in terms of signage. So we made, we made a little progress. We're going to be meeting in a little over a month, and we're going to come back and hopefully we'll have ideas for signage and ideas where things go, and we'll see if we can make some steps towards getting moving forward with our with our Trail Committee and also looking at also the possibly having the steps up to Trinidad Head worked on immediately if we can get that done. So there's a few things taking off. Cheryl, who are you working with on the research for our trails?
Sorry, Jack, what are you asking me?
Yeah, I just wondered, I can't remember, who are you, who are you working with to consider what we need to do for our trails?
Yeah, so Carol Vandermeer and Anita Thompson are working with me, and Becky is joining us to talk about putting together a proposal, kind of a statement of work, what we would need if we were to go out and get a company to do some signage for us. So kind of a short term versus long term view, and Jack and I have, I think we've been working on the short term this past week.
Hopefully we'll have more next next meeting.
Yes, yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Any other updates? We'll have to to add to our agenda for the April meeting to talk about Mr. Tuttle getting involved in some of these extra activities with different boards and different committees. So Eli, if you don't mind making a note to that, that will make sure that we cover that in the April meeting. At this point, I don't have anything to report. I did meet with Redwood Region Economic Development, but really it was more of a, we're gonna start a planning meeting for the next five years, so I'll probably have some more to report at a future meeting. And Humboldt Transit Authority meets tomorrow, so I'll have that as well in the April meeting. So at this point, we will move on to our staff report. Mr. Nafa.
Thank you. So included in the packet is the City Managers Report, and I started off by saying good news that we found out on Friday that the Department of Water Resources has awarded the city $5 million for getting a new water storage tank, which will be 300,000 gallon, it'll be steel, and also replacing water mains and pipes starting from the plant towards the city. In addition to that, I do talk in the staff report about the work that's being done by PWA and GHD, and at our last meeting, we're talking about a pre filtration water storage site and something that's close to the plant that could store anywhere between a half a million to a million gallons of pretreated water and have that in the winter time so that once we get into the drought period, we have some additional water that we can tap into. Also, regarding Verizon, I did get the update from them. The tower was expected to be brought into service last week, but as of today, because it was supposed to be the end of February, but as of today, they said that there are still some issues that are being worked on. And I know as of last Wednesday, they said that they were still waiting for fiber to arrive, so so the fiber had not arrived as of last Wednesday, so that might be the the holdup at the moment. But they think that they, they says it shouldn't be too much longer at this point as to when they could get the West Haven cell site operating. And at that point, we are going to see what the coverage is in Trinidad, once they turn off the Verizon cell tower on Trinidad Head. And then hopefully the coverage will be good, and then we can proceed from there. If not, then I would like to see them do some tweaks to make sure that our coverage is is number one, adequate, number two, hopefully equal to or better than what we currently have. So I would ask the residents, you know, in the upcoming weeks, if they notice, if they have Verizon cell service and they notice any change, if it's better or or not as good, to please let the city know. Also, I do want to remind all the council members that before April 1st, they should be completing the Form 700. So that's available on the webs, it's available online, and otherwise you could contact our Sydney Clerk, Gabe. But that's should be completed by April 1st. Also, in the packet, I do mention about the upcoming Redwood Empire Division meeting, which will be held live again, and it will be in the city of Ukiah on Friday, March 25th. And so if any council members are interested in attending, please let me know so I can inform the league. They'd like to have an RSVP by the 18th, so by Friday, March the 18th, which will be a week before March 25th. They plan on having a guided tour of Ukiah's recently completed downtown streetscape project along the Old Highway 101 in the town. And then later on, they will have a reception and a catered dinner and wine taste. So let me know if you would like to attend. It's always good to have at least one representative from the city. You know, and so I think that would be good. Also, I will not be able to go because on the 24th and 25th, our insurance company will be in coming and assessing how everything is in the city. So they'll they'll be looking at trails and looking at buildings and giving us basically some feedback as to what the current conditions are and any necessary improvements. Other than that, oh, and I did say in the staff report, I went to the last Trinidad Chamber meeting. They are looking for new board members. They said they'd like to have six new board members. I volunteered to be one of them, so we still still need five board members for the Trinidad Chamber. The Chamber has sent an email to businesses and residents telling them that they need to get these new board members because the other board members are sort of burnt out, and it could have the viability and the future of the Chamber in jeopardy. And and I mentioned in my staff report, not financially, they do have adequate funding through the some of the events that they put on, but they just need people to volunteer to serve on the Chamber Board. So hopefully, we can get residents and businesses and and if you can talk to other people that you know in the community, that would be great. And then you can just pass the name on to the city, to the Town Hall, and then we will share it with the Chamber. So that's all I have. If there's any questions or comments I can entertain.
Any questions, comments for Eli in the staff report?
I just want to say, I just wanted to say that I think it's fabulous that we got this $5 million grant, so good job, and that's that's exciting news. We really need to update the water storage tank, and we needed to, a new, you know, upgrade the water distribution system that was recommended by WAC. So good job. Thank you.
Becky?
So I just wanted to say that the Department of Water Resources is moving pretty quickly. They notified us and the same, basically, they informed us that starting Monday, yesterday, we're good to go starting our project, which is unusual, that it's so quick. So we can get get started right away on that project.
And when you say get started, can you just give us a very sort of high level description of what needs to happen to get that project started?
So the first thing, we'll be entering into an agreement with our engineers and that Eli and I have initiated that discussion with GHD, and so we'll come to council next month with a scope for approval. And it's sort of an interesting possible first thing to do in our stormwater project. There's a segment of waterline on Edwards that will need to be relocated due to the stormwater construction, and so that is possibly an opportunity to install a part of the new eight inch waterline, rather than just doing something that will have to be dug up again. You know, doing something temporary and then digging it. So we'll see if that can get coordinated successfully before they finish their, before JRS finishes their work in that area.
And regarding the leaky pipe, and I was really pleased to see 18% instead of where it's been at other other times for leaks. Is that an external company then that would be brought in to fix leaky pipes, or is that a public works within the city or a combination of the two?
So no, that would be a construction project that would be designed. We'd have to go through the sequel process. We would need a county a per, an encroachment permit from the county because a lot of that work will be from the water plant up to the tanks and then back down to the distribution line. So that will be designed and permitted and go through environmental, then we'll put out a solicitation for bids and select a contractor. That's a very big project that that the city Public Works would not take on.
Got it. I just wanted to give kind of everyone an idea of the scale that we're talking about, so thank you for that.
Yeah, it's a very big project.
Yeah. I see, Paula, that your hand is up. What 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 can we do for you?
I have some comments on Eli's staff report and also the financial statement that are linked. It's my understanding, if on reading the agenda, that the public has a chance to comment. This, we are on the consent agenda, is that correct?
No, we are on the staff report at this point.
Well, I must have misread again, the the agenda. But I do have comments. Is this the right time to to make a comment on the staff report? And also, and the financial report?
Okay, yeah, they're both part of the, they're both part of the staff report, so.
Well, the financial is going to be under consent agenda.
Sorry, you're right. You're right. What what what's your comment on the staff report, Paula?
Okay. I'm concerned about the water budget, the the amount of money that we have in reserve. And I had asked Eli when I met with him about the cost of engineering that's being done currently, and in the report, he said that both engineering firms were looking into the feasibility of various pieces of property in the upper Luffin Halls and also around the water plant. I'm going to mention the financial statement because it's so linked. Line 75300 contracted services. The current period is 28,000 plus, the current year is 93.5, and it's almost 400% over the original budget. So I don't know what these contracted services are.
And so real quick, this is the the financial, so if you would like us to, and we'll come to this, the consent agenda, if you want a particular component of the consent agenda pulled for discussion, you can request that of the council.
Okay.
So I just want to, I want, I know that they're linked, but I want to make sure that we don't go into the detail right now of the financial report because it's not what we're talking about.
Okay, well, I was hoping that Eli would provide a monthly update of what the engineering firms are actually doing. And he said that they were looking at properties that would be available for untreated water up in the upper Luffin Halls. Oh, no, he actually said and that's in my letter. Did you read my letter?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have it in front of me, but he said in essence that it was on, the upper Luffin Halls was on hold. And but in essence, the report that he just gave said that both engineering firms were looking for property around the the water treatment plant. The question is, what is it costing by the month for them to do that? And doesn't it make sense just to, for just a few dollars to send, for the city to send out a mailing to the property owners in the area in question, saying that the property, the city is looking for property to buy and and see what property owners might be interested in in selling their property. And out of those who are interested at that point, tell the engineering company to go examine the property and see if it's suitable for whatever tank that the city wants to put on. I'm just really curious what the engineering firms are doing.
So the the, in the staff report, the the summary is that we are asked PWA and GHD to determine where a possible tank storage could occur using their lens of suitable land, slope, stability, distance to the creek and all that. If properties are found to be suitable, then we'll contact the the owners. We don't, we don't want folks to contact us willing to sell property if we don't need it. So I believe that what you're asking for is in the staff report. And I would ask that if you had further detailed questions, perhaps you could meet with Eli individually, and he can hear your comments and perhaps update for the April staff report to meet the needs that you're after.
Okay, I would just say that to me, it doesn't make sense for the engineering firms to put a whole lot of energy into finding the properties that would be suitable if the owners are not at all willing to sell it.
And and Paul, I'm gonna, Paula, your time is up, so I just want to ask that you continue this discussions, like more detailed discussion, either with me or with Eli, so that we can answer your questions, because I really want to be respectful of other folks who are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
At this point, any other comments or questions from the general public on staff report from Eli? Or from Ms. Pricehall? All right, seeing none, we will move on to our next item, which is items on the floor. At this time, members of the public may comment on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes or less. Comments should be directed to the council as a whole and not individual council members or staff. Council and staff Council and staff responses will be minimal for non-agenda items. At this point, do we have comments from the floor? Mr. Hakenin?
Hey, thanks. I'll try and get through this. I'm at work and hope I won't get called away. Good evening. I'd like to talk about the Water Services Contract that the city and Coleman Engineering have entered into for operation of our water treatment plant for thirty five thousand dollars a month. First, I want to thank the council and city staff for their work on developing a stopgap measure that is in place to ensure that no disruption in water service happens in the short term. I did hear Eli at the first council meeting in February state that finding a provider to contract with was challenging due to timing and availability issues. With that in mind, I have some concerns, questions and thoughts, and I'd like to put to the council staff as we move forward. Obviously, the current monthly expenditure of thirty five thousand dollars is not sustainable. Each month is nearly ten percent of our three hundred and seventy eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty eight annual budget for six oh one, the water department, of which currently a hundred and thirty six thousand is allocated towards wages and only nineteen thousand for contracted services. It was also stated that the intent is that Coleman Engineering will be training our own personnel and employees to allow them to become appropriately certified to the required levels that we can once again take in-house control of our plant and stop the contract for services. Upon reviewing the contract for services that was submitted and approved, I don't see any language about providing or assisting with training certification of our personnel listed there as a contractual obligation. That's a concern for me, and I hope I simply missed it in the document and attached scheduled services. I also did not hear any kind of timeline timeframe to accomplish training certification of city employees. No schedule, no measurable benchmarks, nothing to guide, manage and ensure that this goal is actually accomplished in a reasonable timeframe. I know from twenty five plus years spent in both the corporate and government, environmental, governmental environment, that open-ended goals or projects are a challenge to complete, and when done so, are frequently not done in the most timely and fiscally responsible manner. Therefore, I'm asking for the following. One, that there be a standing city council agenda item specific to Coleman Engineering created covering training progress, testing dates, milestone accomplishments, such as advancements within certification tracks and registrations for tests at all council meetings until such time as the city is once again in direct control of our water treatment plant. We have terminated the contract for services with Coleman Engineering. Two, that any of the training obligations and assistance be provided by Coleman Engineering be captured in a signed document covering the scope and desired timeline to complete the training. Three, the city continues to recruit and consider creative incentives to attract qualified personnel for our treatment plant as a parallel and potential alternative pathway back to managing the plant from within our own employee group. Thanks for your time and consideration with this important issue.
Thank you, Aaron. Any chance we could get that letter or that statement that you just made with all the details sent to the city?
Absolutely.
Eli, because it's an item from the floor, Eli, can you give a brief response?
Um, yes, I, I can. So Coleman Engineering, the, the whole purpose of this was to provide, number one, the water quality that is required by the state and the number, and, and for our residents, and number two, to satisfy the state requirements. So the state is fine with having a firm such as Coleman Engineering be our interim water operator. They needed to have someone who has a T three, who's willing to be the lead operator for the plant. I had contacted, I think, as many as six different firms in order to arrive with having Coleman available. We had also reached out to other firms that just didn't have people currently available. So, so that's part of it. The other part of it is the current status. We have one person who is a T two, who is being trained at the plant to, to learn our plant. And at the same time, he will be taking his T three exam. He does have some previous experience working in water plants, which will go towards his T three. So the time that his training here and his prior water experience in another local city will go towards that. In addition, Coleman Engineering has had sent previously and has resent letters to every person who has a T two or T three, or even a T four or five within our area. And, and there's at least one other person that they will be talking to shortly. And they're also training one of our staff people who's a T two, who can eventually become a T three. So, so that's where we're at currently. I'll have to look at what was specified as far as the training, but I know verbally in my follow-up, because I go to the plant and check to see how the progress is coming along. Phil Godman, who's a T three, has been our main contact. There's another guy named Dave Hernandez, who's a T four, who also comes alternating between Phil and Dave, and they come from the Roseville area. And certainly, you know, we realize that thirty five thousand dollars is not sustainable. This is because we have to meet, number one, state requirements, and number two, to make sure that the water that's being delivered to our residents is, is of the top quality. And that the plant is run properly and meeting the state requirement. So, so that's a short-term cost that unfortunately we have to bear in order to continue to do service to, to, to our customers. And certainly, my main goal is to try to minimize that time period. And hopefully, we'll be able to, you know, get at least one other person that they're trying to recruit onboard. And then, and then after that, we'll, after their adequate training period is done, we'll negotiate a contract with them and they'll become city employees, the people that they are training. So that's at least the current status. And I'll look forward to receiving your input, Aaron, and I appreciate your comments. And, and then we can have a further update at the next council meeting.
And I too, Aaron, will, will keep this on, on my radar as well. So thank you for those comments. Other items from the floor at this point? All right, moving on to our consent agenda, all matters on the consent agenda are considered routine by the city council and enacted in one motion. No separate discussion of any items. If a discussion is requested by any council member, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. A single opportunity for public comment on the consent is available. At this point, councillors, did, did any of you wish to pull any item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, this is now the time for public comment on the consent agenda. All right, seeing no public comment, I would like to have a motion regarding the consent counter.
Make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
First by Grover, second by West. Mr. Adams, if you please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, first by Grover, second West to approve the consent agenda as submitted. We'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Grover.
Hi.
West?
Yes.
Kelly?
Hi.
Tuttle?
Hi.
And Mayor Ladwick?
Hi.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Now, moving on to the discussion action agenda items, our first one is regarding Resolution twenty two dash oh four rescinding Resolution twenty twenty one dash fourteen, increasing the tourist occupancy tax rate from ten to twelve percent. Eli, can you give us a brief preamble of why we are rescinding a previous ordinance?
Okay, so I'm just trying to get it in front of me here. Oh, it, it, just before we go to that, I just wanted to check to see if there's anyone from the sheriff's department. I forgot to mention that our Lieutenant Miller is going to be training at the FBI Academy in Quantico, Virginia. So he will be unavailable for the next couple of months. But he said he was going to send someone to our meeting. So I don't know if there's another deputy who is on the call here. If they are, then I'll give him a chance to speak. Otherwise, we'll get into this agenda.
Looks like no one's here from the sheriff office.
Okay, okay. So what we have is the municipal code authorizes that any modification to the transient occupancy tax can be done by resolution. So last December, the council voted to increase the T O T by two percent from the current ten percent that's in the code to twelve percent. We sent letters to the property managers and also to our Bed and Breakfast Hotel in town. And, and it was brought to our attention by the Bed and Breakfast Hotel that we should have a vote of the public and that the law has changed since our code. So we talked with our attorney and the attorney has prepared the item that's in the packet. And basically, it was a copy of a letter that was sent to all of the S T R property managers and owners as well as to the Bed and Breakfast Hotel. And, and that's the page that follows the resolution. So that letter was sent February twenty eighth and saying that the ten percent, the twelve percent is rescinded back to the ten percent and that we would follow up with a resolution. So what you see in the packet is that resolution prepared by our attorney's office. And it's a resolution of the city council of the city of Trinidad rescinding the Resolution twenty twenty one dash fourteen, which was the December, actually it's saying here November ninth. So apparently it was in our November meeting, but it took effect January first. And, and it was a resolution increasing it. And then this resolution is rescinding that increase to, and taking it back from twelve percent to two percent. This resolution also mentions that city staff is directed to review, consider and propose amendments to the city of Trinidad T O T ordinance. So our attorney and staff will be working on revising the current ordinance so that it would meet the current state law. And, and then in addition to that, we can consider placing on the November agenda, actually, the November, you know, election, we can consider the city council, after we have the ordinance revised, can consider if they would like to put that on the ballot for November for the residents to vote on it. So that's the current status of everything.
Thank you very much. And I realize I am, I meant to recuse myself from items one and two, as I am a vacation rental owner. So, Mr. West, can you please take over as mayor pro tem?
I'll be glad to. So are there any questions from the council for Eli?
Yeah, I was just wondering, Eli, now, we originally came up with that based on a statewide petition or something that was going on there. Didn't we have a, a, a reason that we did that? Because it was happening in other places in the state? I'm just trying to recall what the original
Yeah, we Yeah, well, well, currently, the well, the current rate had been ten percent plus an additional two percent that was going to the convention and visitors bureau. But a couple of years ago, they made a change to that. And instead of requiring everyone in the county that had housing, that was providing housing, meaning S T Rs and hotels and motels, they made it that it would only qualify that two percent tax if you had five or more units. And in the city of Trinidad, between the S T Rs and our Bed and Breakfast Hotel, the maximum that we have are four or less units. And as a result, that two percent was taken away for our city limits. And so we just thought it would make sense to go back to that twelve percent because the city, between the trails, the streets, a variety of things are impacted by visitors. And in all fairness to the residents of the city who pay their property tax and so on, it would be proper to have visitors also share in the upkeep of the city and the infrastructure of the city. Meanwhile, I did learn today that on the June ballot, the county is proposing to increase their ten percent T O T to twelve percent. So that will be on the June ballot.
Okay, yeah. I knew there was a, there was a connection there too. Thanks.
Any other questions from the council? Cheryl?
So to that end, then I have a follow-up question. So, so I had read somewhere that, that you needed to put this to, to a vote. So that's, you clarified that. Thank you. If the county goes to twelve, then Eli, does that apply to the in-town businesses? And so then if we raise it, it'd be fourteen and not twelve?
The counties will only apply to the unincorporated areas. So it's entirely up to each city to determine rate within their city. And currently, I, I believe everybody is currently at ten percent, except for Fortuna. So Fortuna is a ten percent T O T. But they have added an additional two percent that goes straight to their chamber. And, and then any hotel that they have that's over five units would have an additional two percent. So in Fortuna, if it's a hotel, they're paying as high as fourteen percent. Otherwise, the rest of the cities are paying generally the ten percent T O T and then the two going to the county visitors bureau.
I see. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Jack, do you have anything to ask? Okay, now, is there anybody in the public would like to comment on this item? Aaron?
I just had a quick question, just in the interest of tying up loose ends. Does tonight's action also, will it update the municipal code specifically three dot twenty dot zero three zero? Is that kind of tied into this resolution tonight so that that will no longer say that it's an action by the city council and will be, you know, kind of clarify the language, so to speak. I just want to make sure that we can move on from this and put all our efforts elsewhere.
Yes, so specifically, in the resolution, item number two, under therefore being resolved, is that the staff is directed to review, consider and propose amendments to the T O T ordinance for the city council to consider at future council meetings. So that's where our city attorney, along with staff, would be working to revise our ordinance in several ways, but specifically, like you said, to deal with the fact that if there's any T O T in, increase, it would need to go to the voters and cannot be done by resolution.
Okay, yeah. And just to be clear, the current municipal code doesn't reflect that. So that'll need to be updated too as part of this.
Yeah, yeah. And, and that's when we say the T O T ordinance, because actually the municipal code
Got it.
takes the, the ordinances that are passed by the council and they become part of the municipal code.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Is there any other questions from the community? I don't see any. Aaron, your hands up. You're done though, right? Okay, thanks. All right, then. Bring it back. Is there any other questions from any of the council members? All right, then I think we're ready to have a motion made.
I will move that we rescind Resolution number twenty twenty one dash fourteen. And I guess that's all I have to say.
Jack, I just wanted to make sure, did you open it to the public?
Yes. We got Aaron at all. Okay, so. Okay, let's go to Gabe. Gabe, you ready to take, give us back, take a vote?
Yes, sir, Councilmember West, as Councilwoman Kelly just noted, we are, we've got a motion and a second, seconded by Grover to adopt Resolution twenty twenty two dash zero four, rescinding Resolution number twenty twenty one dash fourteen. And we'll start with Councilmember Grover.
Hi.
West?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Yes.
Tuttle?
Yes.
And Ladwig recused. So that's passed by four to nothing.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We are going to move on to item number two now. This is the discussion decision regarding the first reading of ordinance 2021-02, amending section 17.56.160 as certified, 6.26 certified of the Trinidad zoning ordinance regarding short-term rentals. So Eli, could you give us a little background on this, please?
Yeah, we had this at our last council agenda. And the ordinance, the S T R ordinance, has recently, in the fall, I believe it was in the fall, it was between the summer and the fall, it had gone to the planning commission. And they approved the version that you see. Our city planner Trevor had worked on making revisions. Subsequently, the S T R committee approved it. And then after that, it was submitted to the coastal commission. The coastal commission has not approved it yet, but we got some initial input. And then also by having it at our last council meeting, we did get some additional input from the council. So it has been tweaked accordingly by our city planner Trevor. So therefore, we're ready for the first reading with the way it's laid out, which the major change, I mean, there are some changes, but the major one is that we put an overall cap of 32 for the city. Previously and currently, we did not have an overall city cap. And then we tweaked the urban residential, reduced that by one S T R. And then we increased the S R zone by one. So those were the general changes there. Otherwise, input from the planning commission and the community was all put in. And this is the product that we have before us. And I don't see Trevor on the call. So, but, but yeah, I can help answer if there are any other questions the council has.
Does council have a question for Eli? I do have one, Eli. If we go, if we haven't got the, can we do the second reading next month if we don't have the coastal commission?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we can end up approving the S T R ordinance. And then it would be conditioned on their approval. But basically, we have a fairly good idea that they seem to be fine with it. Otherwise, it's good for them to know, you know, what we are really proposing by approving it. And at that point, it might help move it along the process. Or if there are any changes that they make, then we'll bring it back to the council in the future.
All right, thank you. And I want to thank Gabe and everybody who worked on this and put it together. So it looks very nice. Anybody, any public comment on this item? Sherry?
Thank you, council members. I won't have my camera on tonight. I'm having internet problems. But my question was regarding, let's see, the application waitlist and lottery. I was wondering why the city has decided to do a lottery system for when licenses become available. We have very limited residential S T Rs in the urban and the other areas. And I think I heard a comment that some applications have been on, in effect, since like 2016 or 2017, a long time. So I'm just wondering why there's a lottery system instead of first come, first served type of thing? Because if you've been on the waiting list for since 2017 and then you just put your name on the list in 2022 and you actually get picked, it seems a little, I don't know. It'd be kind of hard to figure out why, you know, somebody who's been on the list for so long and waiting to have to go through a lottery system. So can you explain your rationale for a lottery system versus first come, first served? Thank you.
Well, I could get started and then either Jack or Cheryl could weigh in simply because I know Jack was involved with this before and Cheryl was on the planning commission. So what I'm going to say is the fact that the prior version of the S T R ordinance had the lottery in it. So I started in 2019. The prior version, I believe, was approved in 2017. So it had, that part has not changed. I was waiting until this version was approved because then we'd know the exact numbers that are allowed. And then I was going to go ahead and go through with the lottery process. But whether it's lottery or first come, first served, I don't know what the reason was that the planning commission, the council came up with this before. I assume it was fairly well, you know, discussed because I know almost every part of the ordinance was quite a bit discussed by the community. So maybe Jack or Cheryl have more input on that.
Cheryl, do you want to answer? We want to do it.
You can start and I'll chime in. I think you have more history on it than I.
I remember it well. We, first of all, when we put this together, we thought this was going to be a yearly thing. So we thought over a year, it would be fair if, as these came in, we have a number of people who have sent in to get, to put their house on. We thought over that year, it was sort of unfair to have. Or we wanted to make it fair for everybody who came in within that year so they could be picked in the lottery. We didn't think that a first come, first served basis was fair on a yearly basis. But what's happened is it's been pushed now to more of a longer amount of time because of some of the things that have gone on with the S T R ordinance. So this was not the way it was, we felt it was meant to go. We thought this would be a yearly process. And over that year, whenever these new houses came in, we felt we, everybody should have the same opportunity. And so this has kind of changed the plans that we had. So I think we're going to have to go back and look at that. As I said, I didn't expect it to be a three to four years of waiting or more of waiting. That wasn't what we thought would happen. So I think it'd be a good idea for us to review that as, after we get this put together. Cheryl, did you want to add anything else?
No, that's exactly what I was thinking was the logic was they would be batched up. And so you had a batch of applications and then you would, you would select one in a fair and equitable process, like a drawing. But given that the background process is a little different than we expected, I think it makes a good, makes good sense to take a look at it. So Ms. Provost has a good point. And yeah, we should take a look at it.
And I'm just going to chime in too. So Eli, you're going to take, you're doing some of this now, this first reading. We're just, you know, putting it on the table here. But when you revise it, now that this has been brought in the open, that that could very well be one of the changes. Is that what I'm getting out of this discussion?
Oh, it's, it's having its first reading this way with the lottery in it. But you know, if the council wants us to look into a first come, first served thing, that could be addressed. I'm not 100% sure how, what our records are like because they started keeping those names down before I began. So I'm not sure if they are listed just by who's interested or if they're also listed by the date that they showed their interest. And whether or not there's like a letter of interest that they want to have in S T R. Because if we don't have that history, then we would definitely have to go by a lottery. Because then we would not know historically who came first.
Is there a waiting list right now?
Yes, yeah, there's a waiting list of about six that I'm aware of.
Six, okay.
And it's for the urban residential.
Okay.
So with that in mind, I want to make sure that we're understanding that we are not going to make a change at this time. Is that right, Eli? That we'd rather finish this?
Well, it, you know, the recommendation by the planning commission and the S T R committee was to go with the ordinance the way it's presented to you tonight. If, if by chance the council wants to revisit that portion, you know, we, we can go ahead and, you know, discuss it at the next meeting and then bring this back at a future meeting.
Okay. All right. So we're going to vote on this, this first reading at this time. Okay, okay. David, do you want to add anything else?
Yeah, I mean, you want, so I can give you, or we as a council can give you direction, even if we accept this first reading to look into that, because I think that is an important thing, especially with two people involved saying that there was a different scenario at the beginning of this process. So I definitely like to accept it to keep the wheels in motion, but you know, under the.
I think what they were getting at is that, you know, the lottery process was put in place, but not realizing it was going to take so long until it went into effect. But up until this past year, we were over the 18 in the urban residential area. And as a result, we didn't have any openings to actually have a lottery. So, but during this past year and with the, I don't know if it was with the increase in housing prices and so on, but a number of S T Rs sold and therefore they came off of the S T R list once they sell. And then that created vacancies.
So would it be, I have an idea. I don't know if it'll work, but would it be appropriate, since the intent of the lottery is annual, to take the app of the six applications and divide them up by the year they were submitted? So if, you know, in other words, you start with 2016 and you do a lottery for 2016 and then you do a lottery for 2017, you're still doing a lottery, but you're doing it in a way that also preferences, it preferences the earlier applicants. I don't know why I can't say preference tonight, but. So it's still a lottery, but you're, you're giving some folks priority if they've been in the queue for a long time. I don't know if that, if that works and still meets the, I think it still meets the spirit of what was intended.
Yeah, I could certainly do that if, you know, there's like the council direction. Then, yeah, then I can go ahead and implement it that way once we do our second reading.
Do you guys agree or?
I concur. I think that's a good compromise.
So Eli, in order to, if we wanted to look at that, we're still going to get some more public comment in just a second. Then we'll come back to this. How do we, how would you like us to do that? If we wish to do that, do we, do we need to vote on it? What's the steps on this?
Yeah, I think it would be good to vote on it. It could be either considered, you know, a motion or it could be considered council direction. But at least we'd have something on the record and then I can, you know, implement it that way. Again, like I said, I want to wait until after we did the second reading. And then I will do the lottery process if that's what's in place. And with the direction of the council, I'll do it, you know, based upon the group that was in 2016 and the group that's in 2017 and so on, until we, you know, fill up all of the vacancies.
Should we bring it back next month as a vote or can we do it? Is that the best way? Because we won't have to, you can't do anything until the second reading anyway.
Could I add something here real quick? Do you mind if I, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just, I'm looking at the lottery language in the ordinance. And I, I may tell, I may be confused, but if, it would really help that if there is a change, because I don't see anything about it, you know, the lottery will be based on, you know, an annual, you know, a waitlist based on which year you submitted your letter. So it would be helpful to have that very explicitly described in this lottery chapter. So that might mean that we, it would be my just recommendation that if we want to relook at this, we should really have it spelled out clearly. Because there are, you know, I'm looking at the list right now that we currently have. There's 11 people on it. Three of them were from 2019, three were from 2020, actually four, and then one from 2017. So, you know, and I, I can't say where everyone on this list is at in terms of their interest. But, you know, if there is a change to this lottery language, then in how it's implemented, I think it should be in the ordinance. It would make it real, a lot easier for us as staff to, to implement. So maybe we could just hold off on the first reading if there is a real interest in changing the terms of this lottery.
And so the process, if we wanted to add the word annual before hold the lottery, so if we said hold an annual lottery, doesn't, we don't have to kind of start over with this, right, Eli? Do we just add that in and then go to the second reading next month? I think I.
I think what Gabe is getting at, yeah, what Gabe's getting at is saying that ideally that we would hold off and the council would give direction that they would, or even have a motion tonight, that they want to have the proposal that she's suggesting incorporated into the ordinance. Then we'd have Trevor modify the ordinance and include that, that suggestion, which let's say you do it in the form of a motion at this meeting. Then she'll include it and we'll bring it back for a first reading at the next meeting in April to include the revised lottery format.
I think that's a good, good plan. I like that. Makes sense to me. And we still have some more public comments. So I'm going to go ahead and go to Aaron.
I just wanted to briefly say that, kind of, I guess, temporarily putting on my planning commissioner hat. I think this is a miss from the planning commission from my perspective, having done this. And I agree with Gabe. I think we need to give the tools and the clarification and very clear direction. So I would be in favor from the planning commission as one commissioner's perspective to go ahead and add that language in before this gets approved and moved on. Thanks.
I'm just going to ask, Sherry, your hand came up for a minute. Do you want to say anything else?
Yeah, thank you. I do agree with your, with Gabe in that it really needs to be spelled out. It really is unclear around how that lottery system will work. Some years you may not have a lottery at all. There may not be any short-term rentals available. So why would you even have an annual lottery? Because there's none available. So, you know, I think that that person who's been on since 2017 should be the first person who should get on it if they're still interested. And then, you know, the first person on the list for 2019, they should be contacted versus somebody who just put their name on the list because they happen to buy a piece of property now and can see the benefit of this. It has changed. You know, the, the S T R has changed the makeup of the city of Trinidad. And I think we need to be aware that these are not short-term rentals or long-term rentals, kind of like for short-term needs, you know? There could be years and years of somebody who having the short-term rental, it's, it's good income and it provides for the families, et cetera. But I think it's time to really look at this section and really spell it out because your, your staff have to carry it out. And if they don't have clear direction on how you as city managers expect them to carry it out, it's going to be very confusing for them. So the clearer you can have it, even if you have to do an SOP, a standard operating procedure for this particular section, that would help them too. So I appreciate your time in considering another option instead of the lottery. The times have changed and we need to really think about that they're not an annual basis that something comes open. There could be several years before something comes open. So thank you for giving that some thought.
Thank you. And before we move on, just, we can, we'll come back to this and we'll make a motion to push this forward. But before we do that, is there any other public comment about any item on the, on this? On the zoning, the short-term ordinance? Anybody else have any comments? I don't see anything else. So I think it's going to come back to the council now. And does somebody want to put, put out a motion? We'll put this, David, it looks like you're ready to go. Go ahead.
I'm kind of ready to go if I'm doing this right, because I'm thinking of just. I'm kind of ready to go if I'm doing this right, because I'm thinking of just putting a motion to table the, the first reading till next month after revisions are made, um, according to the council's direction. Does that sound like a good motion, everyone?
I think that sounds good, Eli. Will that work for you?
Yeah, that's fine for me. Uh, I'd see what Gabe thinks.
Thanks, Eli. I'm, I'm trying to figure out what to write down here. Um, and I'm not even quite, I'm not quite sure what the direction is, other than just to review it more in depth and discuss it further, or are you talking the lottery system specifically?
I'm talking about the lottery. Um, I can revise the motion, um, to, direction from the council to revise the lottery system, um, and, and check out if it's antiquated or not.
So not just to revise it, but actually maybe come up with some new suggestions as to, as to how we can better do it based on um, a priority of a true waitlist starting from 2017 forward? Or are we just going to, you know, tire some more?
I'm saying that, yeah, to let the, uh, planning commission decide if it is needed. If we don't need it anymore, bring it back next month, you know, with the, with the way a waitlist instead of a lottery at all. If it's not really necessary and it adds confusion and unfairness, then I'd say to get rid of it and just make it back to a waitlist. Because like was said at the beginning, it's a different situation, or it was thought to be a different situation anyways when, when the ordinance was made about lottery, so.
So we could make
writing anything out with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to put it together.
We could make a recommendation now for first come, first serve. Instead, I think that, um, I think I'm not yet completely clear on all the reasons why the lottery was set up in the first place. And so, you know, because a first come, first serve does seem logical if, if a bar is met for a short-term rental applicant, assuming there's some sort of criteria, then, you know, yeah, why would you hold applications for a year, for example, until you could, could draw the lottery? So I guess I would be comfortable with saying moving to a first come, first serve unless someone knows a really good reason why we shouldn't. And then we could modify the language and bring it back, I guess, as a process. But forgive me if I don't completely understand the process yet.
Yeah, that's pretty straightforward. I mean, I, I, I think I could get something out of that and we could ask, uh, you know, Trevor, and, and did I, did I get that correctly about, um, bringing it back to the planning commission for discussion? Or are we going to stick with the council on this one?
Well, they can review it and, uh, because they're going to delve into it a little deeper. They'll be able to delve into that section, you know, during their meetings a little bit deeper because they can focus on parts of, of our ordinances. You know, rather than the council that has other discussion things we're talking about. And then if they say, no, no, we recommend you keep the lottery because of X, Y, and Z, we do. And if they say, hey, you're right, it, it doesn't really need to be there and we'll just do first come, first serve. Then we can accept it next month. That'll be our first reading and, and get the thing rolling again.
So maybe, um, to the, the motion that we're going to make tonight, perhaps I'll take a stab at it just to see if I get this right. As to, to, um, request that the, uh, planning commission uh, review and possibly revise the application waitlist and lottery section six of the STR ordinance and consider, um, maybe the, the feasibility of a first come, first serve or weigh the pros and cons versus first come, first serve in the existing section as written, you know, something, am I going in the right direction there?
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds exactly what I wanted them to do.
Okay, so is that, are we going, Dave, is that going to be your motion?
Uh, yes, I mean,
Dave, Dave's got it, okay.
Okay, that is my motion, yes, that we, uh, that we, um, table the first reading until, uh, planning commissioner reviews and possibly revises the ordinance to a waitlist scenario other than, uh, and, um, do away with the lottery system currently in the ordinance.
Okay, I think, I think that sounds good. We have a second on that.
I'll second.
Gabe, are you comfortable with that?
I got it. Thank you for the conversation and I appreciate the clarity as well. Um, and we'll just go ahead and say we got a, a first by Grover and second by Kelly to uh, ask the, uh, planning commission to weigh in on the lottery section of the STR ordinance, uh, as discussed at tonight's meeting. So I can pass them along the notes and we'll go ahead and, uh, start with, uh, Council member Grover.
Hi.
West?
Yes.
Kelly?
Hi.
Tuttle?
Yes.
And Ladwig's, uh, stepped out on this one, so we'll say that it passes unanimously.
Um, Eli, can we, will this be ready for next month if this revision?
Well, that would be the plan. We'll ask the, uh, planning commission, uh, to get it on their agenda. And, uh, and then we'll see from there. But yeah, hopefully if they have it ready, we'll have it next month.
All right. Thank you very much. Looks like Mayor Ladwig is back with us, so you're, you're on the number three.
Thank you very much, uh, for taking over, Jack, uh, Mr. West. And so we'll move on to item number three, the discussion decision regarding future schedule of the Water Advisory Committee. So in our packet, uh, we have, uh, the resolution that we as a council passed back in, uh, early 2021, forming the, the, uh, Water Advisory Committee. And the charge of the Water Advisory Committee was to, in essence, take all of the different ideas and, and actions that were, um, underway and really give the council uh, direction on, or at least advice on which, where to spend the effort, um, for increasing water resiliency. And so the committee, the Water Advisory Committee did a fantastic job of collecting quite a bit of information, uh, giving reports to the council. And it was posed at our last, at a previous meeting, I'm not sure exactly when, January or December, uh, is the Water Advisory Committee still in place? And so, um, we pulled up the, the resolution and it looks as if the, 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 the timing or the, the duration, rather, of the Water Advisory Committee was not specifically, um, laid out in terms of an end date. The Water Advisory Committee will meet monthly or on an as-needed basis, either more or less frequently, depending on need. Um, and so that certainly covers the frequency of meetings, but not the term. Uh, their two-year term, the council members and planning commissioners will hold two-year terms on the Water Advisory Committee. But really, we're bringing this back to the, to the general public and to the council for consideration. Do we reactivate the Water Advisory Committee? Uh, do we modify the Water Advisory Committee? Or do we, um, continue on the current path that we have without the Water Advisory Committee formally in place, but some of the activities still, um, still in place? So let me start with the council and get your initial input on the sort of the future of the Water Advisory Committee. Cheryl?
Um, I was on the Water Advisory Committee, so I feel like I have some, some experience with it. I think, um, you know, I'm a little bit on the fence because part of me says that we've, uh, achieved most of the objectives set before the Water Advisory Committee. But now there are almost, uh, new potential objectives. So there's the $5 million that we have for water storage tanks and distribution. Um, there's kind of the ongoing work with, um, PWA and GHD, and there's, uh, the process, you know, kind of how do we, um, declare, uh, stages of the drought contingents from this drought contingency plan? So the different drought stages and stuff. And just by the amount of conversation tonight, um, on all things water, it seems like there's still quite a bit of, of interest in the community about, about the ongoing, um, provisioning of water to the community. So, so now I've kind of, uh, tipped the scales a little bit to, maybe we should continue the Water Advisory Committee and, and, uh, slightly, uh, modify the objectives.
And can you just take that one step further, Cheryl, on slightly modify the objectives? What in your, again, having been on the Water Advisory Committee, what, what do you see as the next, the next phase for the Water Advisory Committee?
I mean, I think some of these are still relevant, like providing the public forum to address and discuss water, uh, issues. Because as I said, you know, we're, we are spending a fair amount of time in the city council meetings about water um, and communicating to the public about more specifics about what's going on with, uh, looking for property for water tanks, how the, um, we could now expand to talk about sort of, you know, kind of how we're doing in our process of identifying property for water storage tanks and acquisition and when's the construction going to take place and that sort of thing for the, uh, distribution lines. Um, in terms of the recommendations, I mean, I think I take off, you know, to, on ways to improve the supply of water. I don't know if that's still, maybe we've already accomplished that, so. Uh, but report to the council regularly, I think would stay on.
Okay. Other thoughts from the council?
Yeah, I concur with, uh, most of what she said too. Um, and I think that, yeah, that it is an evolving process. So I, I don't think it'll be the same Water Advisory Committee per se as the objectives have changed and the situation has changed, um, with the money and that, you know, almost guarantee of some big things happening. I think it's good to have a specific group of people dedicated to such an important resource in the city that can bring back recommendations because they can take the time to focus on it for a couple hours. I mean, we were there four hours one night talking about water on that committee and it, you know, we just don't have the time here to do that. We can't talk about one discussion. And so I, I would recommend it, uh, keeping it alive on an as-needed basis, which will most likely, as some of these projects take off, become more frequent.
Okay. Mr. West, Mr. Tuttle?
I'd be glad to just say, I agree with David. I like the idea of looking at the meeting dates, to, to see how, what, how often they should meet. I think that should be just on a, on needed basis and to, uh, look at the objectives. That'd be nice to change some of the objectives. So a little few changes, I think it'd be a, uh, I think I like the idea, so.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yeah, I support that, uh, what, what Ms. Kelly was saying. We, we definitely need to keep this going. So I'd, I'd support, um, this, uh, the committee.
And, and, uh, Jack, as your, as the newest member, you were, you were part of these discussions. But do you, can you weigh in on where you see the next sort of version 2.0 of this Water Advisory Committee? What would be, in your opinion, some of the objectives that the committee might have that are new?
Um, definitely, um, using the, the new grant money, the $5 million, um, that we, we were awarded, so. And, um, just letting us know where the, where the land, uh, um, you know, buying the property to, to put the new steel tank, uh, and letting the committee know where that's going to be. So, yeah.
All right. Um, other, other thoughts from the rest of the council? Just again, I'm, while we're, while this is fresh, I'm trying to capture people's ideas for next directions. Any other thoughts on new objectives for the Water Advisory Committee? Because the landscape has changed. As we've accomplished, some of the, the things that we set out to do was to secure funding for fixing leaks and tanks. So that's, that has occurred. But what does that mean? What's next, I guess? Go ahead, Mr. West.
I, I think we need to, uh, kind of make a very general objective. I think they may change on a regular basis as we move through the water process. So, um, I, I think, oh, I think we just need to make it very, a little bit general so the water committee can make decisions about what's coming up and what we're going to be doing. So, um, it says provide public forum, which I think is a great idea, and assist city manager. Uh, so actually, most of these may be a general enough that, that, um, it, they're, they're maybe fine.
Okay. Um, at this point, I'm curious, the sort of on a, on a mechanics level, um, getting the information right now, where the city manager is working with the PWA and GHD to get updates and with our, our grants, uh, manager, Ms. Price Hall, all the different things that are happening. Um, is this, is this Water Advisory Committee then going to join Eli in those updates and keeping in touch with the, the different entities? There's a lot of moving parts and a lot of folks that are, uh, that are involved in this. Um, I'm just curious where the Water Advisory Committee and the city manager, how they work together? Because right now, like I said, it's, the, the structure is set up where the city manager is keeping tabs of all these different efforts underway. Well, how does the Water Advisory Committee play a role in that?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, I was saying, it doesn't right at now until stuff gets going, like the projects get going. And then it kind of meets together so that they have something to, to get off of. Because like you said, one of the main objectives was securing funds. And the, now that funds are secured, they'll have to meet once those funds start being used to decide, you know, this is working out well or this isn't working out well of whatever variable they're discussing at their specific meetings.
Okay. Other, other reactions?
I mean, I guess I was going to say something similar, which is that potentially, you know, it's, it's to some degree, it's, it's more Eli coming in, uh, presenting to the Water Advisory Committee what's, what the current status is, the Water Advisory Committee giving feedback and then raising concerns where appropriate to the city council. So if, yeah, so it's, it's like a first pass oversight on, um, not only, uh, not only just work that's being done with, under contract, but oversight of things, even the contract with the, um, what do they call it, Coleman, for the water plant, right? So looking at that and saying, oh, okay, are there other options? Are there other things we could be doing? And what role can the Water Advisory Committee do maybe to help that? Um, but the, it does seem like there are a lot of moving parts and having a committee that's looking at it and going deep, um, you know, makes a lot of sense.
Okay. I, again, just thinking off the top of my head here, or, or actually reacting to, to the discussion. Um, if the Water Advisory Committee is, is maintained, I think one of the first, um, useful activities would be for the Water Committee, Water Advisory Committee and the, our engineers, PWA and, and GHD to meet and to, to have these discussions. And I only say this because my learning curve is steep on water. And every time I meet with the engineers, especially onsite at a water tank where we can just see things happening, that discussion is irreplaceable, uh, in terms of keeping these so many, many, many moving parts, um, to, to bring clarity to, to the, you know, are we talking about storage? Are we talking about pre-treatment storage? Are we talking about these different things? And it really, that would be my recommendation, should this Water Advisory Committee, um, keep going. So just, I'm asking everyone to kind of keep that in, in the back of your head as we continue this, this discussion. Uh, what I'd like to do is bring it out to, to, uh, the general public uh, for your input on the Water Advisory Committee. Ms. Labine?
Yes, my video is not working this evening.
We hear you fine.
Okay. Um, there's a number of things that the Water Advisory Committee, um, can do that you haven't mentioned yet, which includes a follow-up of Counselor Kelly's report on a rebate program for water customers. I'm creating private water, uh, storage systems. So that, that's, that would be a task that would be very useful and that hasn't been done yet. So either the Water Committee is going to do it or hopefully the council is going to do it. And the council tends to be, get very busy doing other things. Um, another thing they could do is, uh, financial analysis of water funds, expenditures, income, and look into water rates. And something that wasn't mentioned this evening is a committee membership. There's not very many committee, uh, members left on the Water Advisory Committee. Um, on Resolute, Resolution 202102, I must have an early copy that was revised because originally it says it will can consist of two members of the city council. One member of the planning commission will be recommended by the commission and appointed by the city council. And then it's a, a city engineer and a city manager. Well, that changed apparently, and there were two, um, community members assigned to the, uh, water committee. So that needs to be, perhaps you could spend a moment and could spend a moment in discussing, assuming that you're going to decide that the, that there is enough work for the Water Committee to continue doing. And if you do decide that, I volunteer to be a member.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I, the, the version that's in our packet that I'm seeing is two council members, one planning commissioner, and two City of Trinidad water customers. The council members and the planning commissioner shall vote and select one of their own to serve as the committee chairperson. So that, that, I think you do have an older version, Paula. So any other public comment on the Water Advisory Committee and its future? All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. I'm definitely hearing an interest from, and it makes sense. The water situation certainly isn't over. So thoughts on how to, should we revise the resolution? As it stands, go in terms of membership or objective, or simply give new direction to the Water Advisory Committee? And at this point, we would need to choose members from the council and then ask the Planning Commission to do the same. And we have one volunteer tonight, so we would have to call for volunteers as we've done in the past. Maybe for our April meeting, we would, we would decide on membership for the Water Advisory Committee. But are we?
If I could weigh in?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that, you know, the Water Advisory Committee, out of those five positions, three of them are current members. So Dave Grover is one of the council members and is still on the committee. Richard Columbus, of course, left. So there's a vacancy from the City Council. The planning commissioner was Cheryl Kelly. She's now on the council. So yes, the planning commission needs to have one. And then the two, the City of Trinidad water customers are Bryce Kinney and Dwight Miller. So those two positions are currently filled.
Okay. Okay. So then I think we, if, again, if we decide to do this, which I'm, I'm very much in favor of, that we have the, at our April meeting, decision on membership, right? To see if it was a two-term, let's see, that, we don't specify the length of term for the non-voted member or the non-elected members. Interesting. So we would have to reach out to Dwight and Bryce and see if they're still interested. So do we need, we need, I, I believe we don't need any, any vote. I think we're just looking for direction at this point. Do we have consensus though, on, on the direction that we want to go with? And if there's any guidance that we want to include in that direction, now's the time?
I just have a question, Mayor Ladwig. It's really, I think it's for you, because you've been really close to this in terms of kind of the, you know, as you say, the mechanics of, you know, managing along with Eli, the, the contractors and so forth. And so I would want, I guess at some point, we want clarity that the Water Advisory Committee probably doesn't get involved in any of that sort of direct supervision, right, per se. So I, I don't know, I guess it was a question for you on, we, we, are you able to kind of see where the Water Advisory Committee would operate versus sort of the city management under your guidance?
You know, I think that's a great question, Cheryl. I think the, what, what the, the original intent, or really any advisory committee, is to keep all of the different ideas afloat and then recommend to the council. So yes, not, not as a, in any way, shape, or form to manage the contracts, right? So we, the advisory committee said, get money. Now we got money. Done. And then all the things that are going to come with that about, you know, that, that's, that's one thing. But as Paula mentioned, there are other ideas that came out of the advisory committee. Do they still need airtime? And then as this thing progresses, more ideas will come up. And the advisory committee, what I'm, what I'm envisioning is the advisory committee is the one having the discussions and keeping all of these ideas afloat. And then the council says, yes, 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 no, yes, no, to all the different ideas that come forward.
Right. I mean, that's what I, what I was thinking as well. I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding your direction.
Right, right. The, the comment I made about, you know, the, Eli's already managing the, the, the projects, if you will, the grant applications, and then the projects once they get approved and so on and so forth. That's still city staff. Absolutely, city staff. But we have some other ideas out there that perhaps if we had the workforce, and I'll just bring up the, the water storage, the personal water storage, that's something that we, you know, that you looked into and has still some room to, to perhaps be developed further. So that's what I think with the Water Advisory Committee is, is useful is is to keep all of these ideas in the public eye and also in the council's attention on an agenda, on a, a meeting packet. So.
Great. Thank you.
Yep. Mr. West?
I just wanted to add, I'd like you to, I think as, if we go forward with this as it's written, I'd like to look at the purpose, maybe see if we could organize a purpose to really be a good structure for what we want to do. I think maybe changing data a bit might be at least something to look at.
And Eli, with a resolution, we can, we don't need first and second readings like ordinances. We can modify a resolution with a council vote. So if we come to the meeting in April and we're voting on, on membership, can we also vote on changes to the resolution without having to go through all these extra readings and so on and so forth?
Right. Yes, you can.
Okay.
See, it, it, it would be good if, you know, if, if, you know, in other words, at that point, people can be thinking what changes they'd like. We can bring them forward at that meeting. And, and then, you know, we'll have to include it, like at least for the public to view at a future meeting. And, and you know, but, and, and then we can pass it at that point.
So really then, I think what we're hearing is, is yes, we want to move forward with the Water Advisory Committee. We want to continue with the advisory committee, but update it for the current conditions. And in that meeting in April, this, we'll have a call for volunteers if need be. If Bryce and Dwight no longer wish to serve, then we'll have two open spots or one open spot. And then planning commissioners, city councilors and whatnot, and review the objectives. So that, that the Water Advisory Committee, because that's what we've heard in the past, is that these committees are formed, but don't always have a clear idea of what they're after, what the council wants with the advisory committee. So we'll make sure that we do that in April as well.
I mentioned purpose as well. So purpose and objectives.
Sorry, purpose and, and objectives. Well, I mean, anything, if the terms of office, if we want to, you know, whatever, we'll look at this whole thing. But yeah, let's put that on the April. And that's ironic because it was adopted in April of 2021. So a year later, we're looking at it again. So that's good. That's good. All right. Other comments, questions on Water Advisory Committee? All right. Looking around the Zoom sphere, I don't see any. So we will move on to our next item, which is discussion decision regarding returning to live council and planning commission meetings. And so I really wanted to bring this forward. It feels very much like it is time to come back in person and to do so safely and to do so where we actually benefit from the last two years of, of Zoom. Because the things I want folks to consider and, and hear about tonight is council, because we have the council here, council concerns, needs for feeling safe and inclusive, community member meeting, feelings for feeling safe and inclusive, and by safe, of, of, safe about being in person again, inclusive, because if anything, this pandemic has given us the ability to expand our audience. I myself have zoomed in from other cities around the country to have, to have these meetings. I don't like it. I'd rather be in person, but it's possible. And I'm also feeling like it's possible if someone is sick, if someone has a cold, a flu, and we don't have to share our germs so liberally anymore, that if we have a, a, a very useful and easy to use technological solution, we can continue to have the virtual and the in-person together is what I'm, I'm hoping for. So I just really wanted to start this conversation and get, again, council and public feelings on what they see moving forward. And if we, the city needs to adapt its technological capabilities to the time to do so, the direction to do so. So I'm going to start with the council for your input and thoughts and, and then we'll move to the general public. Mr. West?
I, I agree. I think that's a great idea. Hybrid is what most of these places are looking at. And I know I'd be interested to have you talk about what you think, Steve, Mayor Ladwig, what we think we can do for this to help with our hybrid situation. I just want you to know that last time we began to look at meeting publicly, we, one of the pressures was that the state of California said that in order to vote, you have to be there in person. So that may be a difficult, if we're going to try to think of council members being able to do remote meetings. But, so we'll see what, how that comes out. But at least I think for public, it'd be a terrific idea if we can figure out a good hybrid system.
Mr. Grover?
Yep, that's exactly what I was going to say to give the staff direction tonight at the end of this discussion to, you know, do the outreach, see how everybody else is doing it, and start integrating it maybe by next month, but for sure by May, you know, because we'll, we'll make the official thing once we have it set up. This is how hybrids work. Then we can load on it as a council and, and make it our, our new way. And it is great, like you said, if you're, if you can't make it, or you're not, you know, you're spreading germs or something, it's really nice to, to have this option that's been around for years, but we were forced to really to embrace it these past couple of years. So we might as well integrate it and modify it and make a lot more people happy, people that prefer in, you know, in-person meetings. I do too. I, I, I just like the interaction. I like the spontaneity of it. So, but if I was not feeling good or had something, I definitely wouldn't want to pass it along. So yeah, I, I think that's the direction to go, directing staff to get going and, and what we need to do to make hybrid meetings.
Great. Ms. Kelly?
I agree. I mean, it's kind of the best of both worlds. If we can have some in-person and also continue to leverage some of the things we've learned over the last couple of years. So all for it.
Mr. Tuttle?
Definitely would agree. Can't wait to start seeing people in, in person. I'm tired of Zoom calls. So yes. And it's, it's going to be good for the public who don't want to actually go to the meetings to participate remotely.
All right. I have attended a, a hybrid meeting with the Humboldt Transit Authority with a $1,000 piece of technical equipment that was absolutely seamless. So like anything, we can learn it. And that was several months ago. So I'm sure the tech is there, but I just, I, I, it's possible. And I think it's, I think it's obtainable as long as we can get our old city hall to cooperate with the, the acoustics. But I think, I think we can certainly do it. I, I'm going to jump out to the, the general public, but first I want to give Eli a chance to, I don't, just what's the chatter among city managers regarding this topic? I know it's all over the place.
Yeah, the last meeting that we were supposed to have last week on Thursday got canceled because the two of the cities were unable to attend. So we're unable to address that question, but I'll make sure that we ask it at our next meeting at the end of March. And, and I was talking with staff specifically with Gabe, since Gabe is our city clerk and Gabe organizes and sets up the meeting room and, and then runs the technology and so on and so forth. I suggested that we could have one of our other employees, either Jennifer Anton, assist Gabe. Because if we want to do something hybrid, we're going to need someone, you know, in addition, because Gabe would be handling the live meeting, but we would need someone to help monitor and help lead the hybrid effort through Zoom so that both things could be happening simultaneously without, you know, one person trying to struggle to do it all. I think it would take two people. And then, you know, I'll let Gabe weigh in, but we were talking specifically about, like you said, the acoustics in the room, you know, how everything would work, how it would pick up, you know. So, so certainly some improvements will need to be made. And, and then what kind of cameras and where the cameras are located and so on, and that we may have to reach out then to access Humboldt to get their input again. But I'll turn it over to Gabe, so he could weigh in since he's on the front line of that.
Thank you, Eli. I have, I think one of my biggest, one of the biggest parts of this job is managing expectations. And at least that's from where I'm sitting. And, and I'm, I've been, I've been, you know, if, if, if we had a good solution, I think we would have had it set up by now in the town hall, being that it's been almost two years since we've, you know, had to think about this. And I, I really have been excited to see the rubber hit the road for other agencies and how they, how they make things happen and what methods work for them. Our town hall is unique in the sense that it's not a regular meeting room. It's a multipurpose room. So, you know, I'd love actually to talk to you, Mayor Ladwig, about the HTA setup. I don't know, I know they meet on V Street. I don't know if it's a, you know, permanent room, or if it's a boardroom with a giant table, but I'd love to hear more about that. I'll be doing some research for sure over the next couple of months, because it sounds like we're really looking forward to having a hybrid situation. But I also know that we do have some limits. And if we can, you know, the, the more we use technology, I think Access Humboldt is going to be a key partner in this, in terms of, you know, sound, whatever we do, it's going to change the look of the town hall completely. And I want to be mindful of that and how our town hall looks and feels to people when they come and have a wedding reception, you know, looking around and seeing cameras all over the ceilings and screens pulling down. I think that might really change the vibe of that facility. So I, I want to, I want to move carefully and cautiously through this, but also, you know, do it in a way that meets your objectives. So, you know, maybe a little bit of patience with us would be, would be what I would request. And, and possibly even, you know, phasing, you know, coming up with a plan and then sort of phasing it in over the course of a, a couple of months, starting sort of softly and then really digging in once we have a chance to do some, some good research and find something that suits us as opposed to, you know, HCOG, who meets in permanent board facilities that are wired, designed, and set up for, for this stuff on a regular basis. So that's kind of where my head's at with this. And, and, and I appreciate the conversation.
And I'm happy to, to talk details about the Humboldt Transit Authority's setup because it's, it's certainly not a big, open room that also serves as a wedding hall, but it is not a, a, like you say, it's not the council chambers for the, for the county, the supervisor chambers that are, that are permanent. So we'll, we'll talk details for sure. And let me jump in and I'll get ahold of you this week, Gabe, for sure. Aaron, I saw your hand come up first.
Yeah, sorry about that. I'm just walking back in. One, I'm really grateful that we're talking about a hybrid meeting format. I think that's a really good direction to head. Two, for Gabe, there's a technology called the Owl. I don't know how it would work, but it's basically a device that sits kind of in the center of the room and can spin around and look at the, the different people and kind of focuses in and captures that. And maybe, you know, something to look into, I think about $1,500 and there, there, they go in temporarily and then you bring it back out at the end. The third point I had was to Jack's point about the voting issue. Where I work, we're governed by a elected Board of Directors, and one of our directors used to do remote meetings. And I believe the requirement was that his location had to be open to the public at the same time. So I'm happy to reach out to our administrative staff here at work and find out what Work and find out what they had found out in the past so we can work a little smarter instead of having to reinvent the wheel. And I think that was all I had on, on the hybrid meeting. So thank you for looking into that. I think that's a great tool.
And Aaron, that is the, the tech that we were using.
It is, okay.
And I once attended a board, a council meeting from a hotel in. On Catalina Island and I had a note on my door saying, public meeting in process. All are welcome and thankfully no one came in, but you're right, you have to have. You have to be in a publicly noticed location to be, to be in a remote setting. So I'm, we already have ways of kind of mitigating that in, in place. Ms. Fleschner?
I, I, this is my first participation in two years. My son Ashley installed Starlink at my home up until today. I haven't been, I've attended almost all of the city council meetings for the last two years, but I could only. Hear you. I couldn't participate at all. And as, as someone who feels that our responsibility as citizens is to be engaged as much as possible. To be good citizens, it's been a very lonesome two years as far as having any input in these meetings. This, you all look terrific. I, but even with my new Starlink system. You've all frozen a number of times where I couldn't hear you, maybe others experiencing that as well. Anyway, I wanted to just say. Thank you for coping with COVID the best you can, and I look forward greatly to having in-person meetings again. And I am very mindful of the amount of work that Gabe does to try to set up these meetings. It's a massive job under the best of circumstances. And if there's massive expense involved for our city of Trinidad, which. Needs to be, you know, fiscally conservative and frugal where possible. If, if setting up these hybrid things is a massive amount of expense for our city. Then I could be convinced, I guess, not to have them, but I, I just, I think. It seems like every meeting that I've attended, there have been misunderstandings that could have been cleared up. And I've seen raised hands go up on my screen that, that the council has not noticed. And it's just in person where we can see each other's faces. And I'm sorry not to have mine up in person. I, I don't know how to do that yet. Need a tutorial here at home. Anyway, that's all I had to say. I look forward to in-person meetings. Subject to intense fiscal responsibility for the cost for the city of Trinidad and thank you very much.
Thanks Patty for, for joining us. Other thoughts from the general public on the considerations the city needs to make in meeting in person and hybrid? Ms. Provault?
Thank you, Mayor Ladwick. I do also agree with the hybrid method. I think, you know, times have changed. And, and our technology will change as we grow with it. And I do like Gabe's suggestion to take it one step at a time. And I also. Really feel like there needs to be somebody paying attention to. The people who are on the Zoom platform or whatever platform you choose to use because. They need to be feeling that they're right in the room with you. And to acknowledge them when their hands come up or to be really paying attention to them. It's just as, as vital important as the people in the actual in-person meetings with you. So I, I do think you need to have a couple of people. Paying attention, you know, to this new environment that we're now finding ourselves in. But I think that you're right, that I think you'll get a lot of people attending in person. But then if you can't and you're having. You know, babysitting duties or whatever, you can still listen in by Zoom. And what a great option that is to have to the citizens of Trinidad. So thank you.
I can say, you know, as a facilitator of meetings, I've been fortunate to kind of. Use this last six months or so to facilitate meetings that are hybrid. And yes, it requires the extra people power that Gabe mentioned. But I, I will say that as long as I'm on the council, I'll commit to, to keeping. Everybody involved in these hybrid meetings. And I really appreciate your, the way you framed it, Ms. Provault, was, you know, that they're, they need to feel like they belong in the room. Just as, as everyone who is in the room. So that's certainly a commitment that I make. And appreciate that input. Other thoughts from the general public or the council at this point? We just, we're looking for direction. Mr. West?
I, I'd like to suggest that we, I, I'd like to see this get going as quickly as possible, but. I suggest that we find a way between now and. The next meeting to see if we can come up with some answers on how to bring hybrid in. Can we? Gabe, can we get something, kind of a practice session going of some sort between now and then and see what the options are?
I think by the next meeting. We could have some. Possible.
That's going out, Taffy.
Plans or technology, you know, in mind, you know, we can certainly investigate the owl. I do want to have a talk with Access Humboldt. You know, there's, there's sound, there's video. And there's, then there's the whole live aspect. Associated with our meetings that we haven't had to deal with for the last couple of years. And that's pretty, pretty intense in terms of just the labor to set up and take down. So I think we can. I'm not sure if we could have technology implemented and would be ready to go with our first hybrid meeting in a month. But I certainly would like to have a plan, if not something, you know, perhaps like a baby step. By the, what are we saying, the April meeting? So I think I can. Take the direction that we have today and, you know, get the wheels turning, so to speak. And give you, give the council, especially city manager Eli and I, will talk about it and keep things going and we'll be able to give. You know, get updates along the, the next few weeks as to how far we can get along.
Thank you. Great.
That, that was going to be my direction to send staff. To bring as many options as possible by next month's meeting. I, I go with Gabe because he, he's got the experience and he wants to, you know, I think, I think incrementally. You know, it might take a couple of months, but at least we'll know that we've exhausted every option before we just, you know, get the technology set up and then say, oh, we could have done this and it would have been better. So I would say at this point to direct staff to bring back as many options for hybrid meetings as possible next month's meeting.
And certainly include me in any, I like Jack's idea of a test run, you know, if you need a. If you need to set up a, a meeting where some folks are in person and some are. In a Zoom and to, to do it in the town hall, just to see what it looks like or in the civic club room or some other space. Please include me in that test run. Other thoughts, other considerations? All right, we've got our, our marching orders. So thank you very much for your input, everyone. And again, we very much look forward to being back in person. And we'll move on then to our final discussion, decision item, which is resolution 22, 2022-05. Opposing initiative 21. Blah, blah, blah. Eli, can you please let us know what the League of Cities is asking for here?
Okay, yeah, for this. Item, the League of California Cities is asking all the cities in the state to oppose this. Apparently back in 2018. A, a group of corporations tried to get a similar measure on the ballot. And they didn't talk with the cities and the League of California Cities and decided not to do it. However, now they're bringing it back again. And, and as is mentioned in the resolution, in the, our resolution. That there is a growing coalition of public safety, labor, local government, infrastructure advocates and other organizations. Throughout the state who are opposing this. This measure would reduce funding for a critical infrastructure. And it'll raise the, the vote so that. Instead of having a simple majority would require a super majority. And, and as you might know, super majorities are very hard to come by. And, and as a result, if a whole bunch of measures that cities are trying to do. Would require a super majority, then a lot of our potential projects and a potential funding for projects. Could be stymied. So, so that's why the league is suggesting that all the cities. Do a resolution opposing this initiative.
Any questions for Eli from the council? Ms. Kelly?
Sorry, trying to get off mute. So my understanding from looking at this briefly today, and I, I don't think I fully understand it yet, but it appeared that. This would be an initiative that would allow. Measures to bypass the legislature and the governor and go direct to the voters. And I thought we, in California, we could already do that, like the Californians Against Waste have positioned a, a ballot measure in next November to. Reduce or eliminate single-use plastic, for example. And they did that after the legislature failed to pass a couple of bills. So I, I just wanted to be cautious about whether or not this could have some other unintended consequences. So I guess my question, I don't know if you understood my question, it was just, how is this different from? The ability to take measures directly to voters today? Or do you know?
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm not sure exactly how that would be differing. It, it, it will be diff, you know, much more difficult to be able to get. Things done on a statewide level, but as far as that approach, I'm not sure exactly how that would all fall in. I don't know if anyone else, you know, had, had read that in, in, in a way where it might be clear as to what Cheryl's getting at.
Yeah, she, right. She's talking about ballot initiatives that set up by public people where you, where you petition. And I think most things in California require a half a million. Signatures to get on the state ballot. I'm sure there's, you know, provisions for local initiatives too. But at this point, I, I generally have been going with the recommendations. Because they do a lot of research and they're definitely looking out for the local governments as far in my experience so far anyways with them. I haven't been able to attend some of the conferences that I wanted to, too, because of pandemic. Because I did want to get involved with the League of Cities, but I, I. Generally unless I see something that really stands out to me, but that was good that, because you looked at it deeper than I did. It looks like I just got a chance to peruse it at the end and, and it is hard to soak all that in and, and try to, you know, make heads or tails of. Of these things when they first come out. So. But I, yeah, at this point, I, I, I understand that. So I, I don't see, and I don't think Eli was able to explain that. You don't see that being a negative recourse, like losing the ability to implement. Some kind of initiative. By the public.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. You know, you know, there's really quite a few things that it does. And, and that's why they actually bring up like, you know, five different points in there. And in the sheet that I'm looking at, it talks about undermining voter rights, transparency and accountability. This misleading measure changes our constitution to make it more difficult for local voters to pass measures needed to fund. Local services, local infrastructure, also includes a hidden provision. That would retroactively cancel measures that were passed by local voters. Effectively undermining the rights of voters to decide for themselves what their communities need. And also limit voter input by prohibiting local advisory measures. Where voters provide direction to politicians and how they want their local tax dollars spent. So, so yeah, it does a whole bunch of things with, with Cheryl's talking about, some of these other things. And, and that's why it really makes it advantageous for. Like for instance, allowing corporations to dodge enforcement when they violate environmental health and public safety. This scheme creates new loopholes that make it much more difficult for state and local regulators. To issue fines and levies on corporations that violate laws intended to protect the environment. Public health, safety in our neighborhoods. So yeah, it's unfortunate that it is so encompassing that it does affect a lot of. What really we think of how democracy, you know, operates where people do have a voice. And this sort of circumvents a lot of the voice that both local government and the, the citizens have.
Yeah, it sounds like it cancels out some stuff without even going to trial over it, you know, it. It just, it, it circumvents the discussion. It just says, well, we're bigger, so. You know, what we do is going to affect you locally too bad, which, which is the same old story from. Corporations from the environment in the seventies when we started realizing. The problems that were happening, fires in lakes and all that kind of crazy stuff. Okay.
So at this point, let me reach out to the general public for input and then we'll bring it back to council. Any thoughts, comments from our general public regarding opposing initiative 21-0042A1? Okay, bringing it back to council then, do we have a motion regarding resolution 2022-05?
I'll, I'll move that we. We oppose initiative 21-0042A1.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a first from West and a second from Grover. Mr. Adams, if you don't mind doing a roll call vote, that would be great.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. So we've got a first and a second to oppose initiative 21-0042A1, starting with council member Grover. West?
Yes.
Kelly?
I'm going to abstain. I just don't feel like I know enough about this one and I think it's going to, you guys are going to pass it anyway, so.
Okay. And Tuttle?
Uh, yes.
And Ladwick?
Yes.
Passes, so what do we have here? Four? Yeses and one abstain. Council member Kelly?
Very good. Thank you very much and thanks for that discussion and also Eli for keeping the League of Cities. Sort of on our radar. They do a lot of work for sure to, to get to the bottom of these things. So thank you for that. At this point, we've had quite a bit of discussion. That concludes all of our regularly scheduled agenda items. We've had quite a bit of discussion for April regarding future agenda items. Are there others that folks want to ensure that we get on a future agenda? All right, moving then to the final act of the evening, which is to adjourn the, the meeting. And thank you all very much for your participation. Take care.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks. Good night.
Bye, everyone. Thank you.